Hello, welcome to KCPTV. I'm Michael Miller. On January 22nd, 2014, the Kansas City Public Schools held their annual board meeting at the Board of Education Building. There were many items on the agenda, including the economics of the school district. Chief Financial Officer Al Tunis sat in for Dr. Green, who is out of town on business.
That brings us to the superintendent's report. This evening, we focus on finances, past, present, and future. Tunis, please take it away.
Again, thank you to the board. This evening, there are four brief presentations that we're going to put together for you. The first one will be our revenue and expense that we look at monthly. And then, we're going to go right into some preliminary look at our budget for fiscal year 2015. And then, we'll talk a little bit about our energy program that we've been talking about in the past, and then wrap that up with the financing for capital. So with that, you'll see in front of you the monthly sheet through December of 2013 for the current year. Just want to draw to your attention again, this is when we begin collecting the, our local tax collections. And so, right around the holiday, it's very close to see where our local collections are coming in. They're down compared to where they were this time last year. But based on some of the collections that we've already seen in January, we anticipate that our local receipts will get caught up. We're still slightly behind where we want to be, but we're monitoring it closely, even though this particular document shows a bigger decrease. You'll notice in the yellow area that's highlighted on the sheet, compared to where it was a year ago. Once again, that's because some of the collections for the, our local collections came in January, where last year, they came in at the end of December. So again, not overly concerned about that. I think that will be in the next couple of months. Questions?
Yeah, questions on the monthly report. Ray?
Is now the time to get an update on property tax deferments as a result of taxing or refinancing projects?
We have, again, we've not seen a change. I will tell you that there are two projects that are receiving a lot of attention, and we're looking to favorably close out one of those. And I think that it will show some additional revenue for the district immediately, show some unanticipated revenue probably for the next three years, and then, that property will completely be placed back on the tax roll. Their agreement isn't completely worked out yet, but I think there's some, we're optimistic that that South Town project will get closed out.
Can we attribute some of this decrease maybe to any, are there any challenges? I know people do have the ability to challenge some of the property taxes with what happened this past year.
No, I really think, I think that even though with those assessments and the problems that occurred in Jackson County with some of the billing that went out, I don't anticipate that will be the problem. I do think it'll get corrected. The collection rate has just been processed slower. I think that we'll see, we'll see us get caught up relatively quickly. I don't have reason to believe at this point that that's going to have an impact yet. I don't think so.
Thank you. Just a brief question on the federal revenue line. I see that we are up considerably from last year, same time last year, by about 40%. Is that, is it a matter of timing, or do we actually stand to receive a little bit more of federal money this year?
No, we do not receive more in federal money. It is in timing, and what it results in is that we received a large federal payment in July from last year. And so, it inflates this year based upon where we were a year ago. Thank you. If you'll take a look in your, you have a handout in front of you, it also will appear on the screen. This is our FY '15 preliminary budget overview. We like to do this in either November or December. Again, let me please remind the board that we're not asking for action and won't for five months from now. This is just an overview to let the board, so that the board is aware of where we are, what we're looking at, and what's going into our planning. I'd like to thank Mr. Jackson as Board Treasurer for the work that he has done. We meet regularly. We go over the information that is being presented, and we'll continue to refine that as we go forward. The next slide gives you, and you have it on your second page, there we go, is, would be the timeline. You'll see the very top is today's date, and you'll take a look, and you'll be able to see the significant dates that will affect the school board as we go through the approval process. It's interesting, in a meeting that we had just earlier, we were talking about a date. If you'll notice, on the fourth line, we've identified a date of April the 10th, which is after the board election for a board workshop. This is something that we do annually with the board. It gives us an opportunity to just literally roll up our sleeves, ask any questions that we have, based on where we are at that, at that date. And so, we'll work with the Board Secretary to make sure that that date will work for the board members, and if it needs to be moved, we'll certainly look to do that as well. We will work with the District Advisory Committee in March to take a progress where we are on our budget at that time. And then, you'll notice from the board workshop to the vote, there's almost a month and a half, six to seven weeks in between, which will give us more time to refine the budget as we make our recommendation moving toward the, toward the approval date, which is right now scheduled to be the end of May. And then, as you well, are well aware, the board is required to set the tax rate currently. It is set at $4.95. Board has to do that by September 1st, and we'll have that opportunity to do that through a series of public meetings. The next slide, I want to talk to you a little bit about our enrollment very quickly, because what drives revenue is, to a certain extent, is based a lot on our enrollment. And if you'll notice, we go all the way back to '98, '99, which was the first year for charter schools. And you'll see the change in our enrollment as we go forward. I'd like to draw your attention to fiscal year 2013 and '14, and you'll see that's the current year that we're in, and there is a significant drop in our enrollment, almost 1,500 students. And we talk in the past about how we're funded in state aid based on our best weighted ADA or best weighted average daily attendance within a three-year window. So it's really important for us to follow our enrollment. And when you ask the question, where did our students go? I've asked Dr. Gilbert to come forward and share with you in the next couple of slides to give you some information about where we were a year, a year ago to this year, and what has happened already this year. Dr. Gilbert?
Good evening. Of the approximately 1,500 students that we lost last year, approximately a third of those students withdrew to attend a charter school. And so, the largest of those charter schools that took some of our students would be Hogan Prep, Alta Vista, and Frontier School of Innovation. And so, we saw that mostly fifth and seventh graders were the ones that left the district last year, and it supports our contention that parents have often said that they did not want to place their middle school students into some of our high schools, and so they started to leave earlier. Some of those charter schools started to expand, not only physically, but also in their grade enrollments as well. And so, they were able to accept a greater number of our students. Of the 900 to 1,000 students that were remaining of that group, 56% of those withdrew to attend a district within the state of Missouri. 34% withdrew to attend out of state or out of country. 7% were other, which would include those dropouts, GED programs, graduates, deaths, and things of that nature. And 3% are, withdrew to homeschool. And so, if we take a look at those students, the 56 that I indicated that withdrew to attend a district in another Missouri school district, we'll see that Raytown, Independence, and Hickman Mills picked up the greater number of our students, followed closely with North Kansas City, Center, and Grandview, and Lee Summit with 24. There's a variety of other districts also, Blue Springs, Liberty and those natures. But as you can see, the greater number includes those three, Raytown, Independence, and Hickman. Today's enrollment today is 14,415 K-12. And this year, we're still analyzing the data, but we're starting to see the same trends that the same three districts, Raytown, Independence, and Hickman are the ones that have taken most of our students thus far this year. The admissions office since August 12th has processed more than 1,700 new student applications into the district. That does not include students that have gone directly to their schools to enroll as well. Unfortunately, though, we've seen thus far 1,821 students that have withdrawn from the district this year. And that includes 261 dropouts, 324 have gone to a charter, 641 to another surrounding school district, 148 are homeschooled, 26 are going to private school in the state of Missouri, 368 have gone outside of the state, majority of those are going to Kansas. Out of country were 35 and 17 other programs. And so, once again, as I said, we were seeing the same trend in that Raytown, Independence, and Hickman, of the 641 withdrawals to another Missouri school district, 311 of those have gone to one of those three districts. And so, I'll be happy to ask, answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Dr. Gilbert, you, on the, on the current year, you talk about a lot of different numbers. The net number from the start to where we are right now?
The net number would be, we've lost 100 students.
Okay. So when we talk about all those students, you can see how transient our population is of the number of students coming in and the number of students going out. That plays havoc on the educational program, but certainly, as we talk about the net number, you'll see where we are right now, but that's where our students are going. Also, I failed to copy those graphs in this report, and so, we'll get those to our board members in the Friday packet at the latest time. My fault on that.
Unfortunately, that is on board docs already, so if people want to check that out from home or from their digital devices. I saw some questions. Jackson?
The bigger question is, as we begin to lose students, it's more of an impact on the city because more students stayed in the city. I mean, some students stayed in the city, but more students moved out of the city than actually stayed within the boundaries of the city, which more affects the district and the tax base of the city. So it basically leaves a shrinking tax base that is basically put on less people within the city to carry the burden at this point.
That's absolutely correct.
And one of the things that we monitor on that is the assessed value. We have to constantly monitor. We have the issue that we deal with our enrollment and the number of students that we serve, but we also monitor our assessed value. And so, we monitor to determine, and we'll talk about in just a second, we'll talk about a projection of what we're basing that assessment, what it will do, and that it will decline slightly for next year as well.
Now, a bigger part of that is that part of the economy, the recession that we're still coming out of, or is all, not all of this, as we look at, is all related to education? Some of it can be, but a lot of it, I know we go from a lot of families in this particular situation, from when we look at are homeless and having to move in that particular situation. How we're attributing that, or can we get those causes of that?
And I think, and we certainly can, but I would tell you that I think it's a variety of reasons. I think it's going to be because of the economy and coming out. But it's also because of things that we've talked about, like economic development tools that divert resources from this, from the taxing jurisdiction in the school district and place them in other areas. And so, I think it's a combination of things that we have to take a look at, but one that we continue to monitor and work with all the time.
But we do exit interviewing when staff leave the district. Comment that came in from the message queue, you know, questions about doing some exit interviewing when parents leave the district. I think it would speak to some of what you're asking about. Ray?
That essentially was my question, and not so much, you know, what kind of a survey we administer, but I mean, what we've heard anecdotally from staff. I mean, it's, you know, this is a continuation of a trend that's been going on for a while, so I know that there are some factors at work that are beyond our reach. Some of these things are within our reach. One of those factors, I would like to know if there's a link between, you know, the amount of decline we saw this last year and how it relates to the state's involvement in what's been going on in Kansas City, because I don't think it's a secret to any of us that the state's involvement has been very reckless. And so, I'm wondering how much of this we can attribute to that.
It definitely contributes a lot to that. I think the perception is, when they hear that the Kansas City Public Schools are unaccredited, they have some biases already. We see that also in the number of transfers within the district, and so, that definitely plays a heavy toll to answer your question regarding exit interviews with withdrawals. We do collect the information. If the parent comes down to the admissions office, we are able to ask them some questions. Unfortunately, a lot of our parents and our students are withdrawing directly at the school site, and so, we don't have that same opportunity to hold them.
All right, we're running short of time. I saw Evans and Heil. Don't want to do multiple rounds unless everybody has an interest. Evans?
I'm assuming, Dr. Gilbert, that these are physical moves out of our district?
Yes, sir. They're, they're physical moves.
And this may or may not be a question for you, but it may be for Dr. Cordoba. Do you have a tracking system of those students who may be coming back into the district after a while?
Yes, we do. Those dropouts that we, that I mentioned, we refer that information over to Dr. Cordoba and his team, and they do track those students. And we're required to track those students once they leave. Oftentimes, what we will do is, once we receive the request from a receiving school district, then we note that in our system, because we do have to track them, where they've gone to.
Heil?
More a comment than just a, not a question, but I, you know, I think if you look at the data, this, this is obviously a continuation of 15 years' worth of declining enrollment. And I think we've done a good job as a district managing this from a, from a financial standpoint, and we'll continue to look forward to Mr. Tunis' leadership on that. I also would just say this, I think it's, you know, I love that you track this data, and I love that you're, you're this on it. But I do think the overarching goal for this body needs to remain the same, and that's that nothing would attract more families into our school district than being fully accredited. And so, I hope that we will continue to focus on that as the goal. And I think that if we see schools that are fully accredited here, I think the other problems will take care of themselves.
Definitely.
Rogers?
Yes, Dr. Gilbert, with the two new middle schools coming online in the fall, what impact will that have on retention of students?
We think that it'll be a great impact, that a lot of our parents have already expressed that once the middle schools come back onboard, that they would eagerly come back to the district. And I think we'll see that in the data as well.
Are you wanting to go? Oh, I'll defer my comment to Board Member Jackson, and then we'll move on.
Thank you. Many people don't know, we get about $22 million a year from the federal government in certain things, but we lose about $27 million a year to tax, incremental financing, pilots, tips, and eats. And these are 30-year particular projections that go out for government, I mean, when the city gives a new abatement for something, and if it doesn't turn out the way in which it goes, it's the district that loses. We are the only district in this area, and Mr. Tunis can kind of back this up, that this happens with. If you go to Park Hill and you want to build a new project, you don't abate the school district's portion of those tax funds. You go to Lee Summit, they will not abate the district's portion of that. We're made to do more with less where other districts can't. We talk about pre-K, that is $40 million project. $27 million of that is being used by 414 12th Street that we could use in projects. Some of them don't even mature out for what the budget is supposed to be, but they're being built on the backs of our children. And at some point in time, we've got to stop that. Other school districts don't do it, but it continues to happen here for the last 40 years. And if you look at projects like the Citadel, where they put out, the city put out routinely millions of dollars for a project that never happened, those are tax dollars, folks, that came from your property tax that could have been used in a school district a long ago to put things that we've been battling for the last 20 years to put in.
If you could, whether it a future meeting or a Friday packet, give us a heads up on whether or not, there's a correlation between the achievement levels of our given schools and the propensity of families to leave that particular school. It's a question that came up in the queue, and I think it'd be great for the board to have that information.
I've provided that to Dr. Green already, and he's going to share that with you, and so we'll place it in a Friday packet as well.
As always, on top of it. What do you have next for us?
Very quickly, let me just run through a couple of extra slides, just to give you that perspective, that introductory perspective of where we are. Again, this is one of our indicators. This slide is an indicator that shows the district's financial stability. I think it's consistent with what Mr. Heil just mentioned, even though the enrollment has dropped and has for quite some time. In recent years, the board has approved a balanced budget, and we've lived within our means, and we plan to continue to do that. And even though we're going to look at a, a cut in our revenue for this year, we still have every intention to live within our means as well. The other thing, just to bring to your attention, our revenue variables. You saw, again, a continuing decrease in our enrollment. That decrease was based just strictly on a mathematical equation, but I do think that with that full accreditation, the implementation of the superintendent's turnaround plan, I think we're going to see not as significant of a cut, but something that will continue to move, to grow this district. You'll notice also under local revenue, we still are operating on that same $4.95 tax levy. We'll share with you where that compares in just a moment when we talk about financing, but we are looking at a decrease in our, in our assessed value, and also looking at a sales tax decrease. One of the things I think we're going to hear in Jefferson City, as you will in a lot of states, is the impact that the internet and online sales is playing in sales tax in states that normally would have received that sales tax, and it is having a significant impact in state revenue related to internet sales. And then, finally, the governor spoke yesterday in the state of the state, made a request in his budget for an additional $278 million to be placed into the foundation formula. If that holds and is part of the legislative action, you'll notice the 93% assessment ratio is being used in this budget at this time, but I anticipate that the, that number will increase if the governor's recommendation holds. The next slide just gives you a little bit of an idea of what impact that will play on the district. You can see next year, we're looking at a loss of about $10.2 million. That will change again as the revenue from the foundation formula may increase. That will have a positive effect and reduce that deficit. Also, if we look at any kind of growth at all in our assessed value, that also will have a potential to change. Then, the next slide, if you'll take a look, and we talk about this many, many times, related to taking the weighted average daily attendance in the best of a three-year window that affects school districts that are in a decline of enrollment, as we are. In the first column, you'll see FY '14, and you'll see that that's the current year. We're currently being funded based upon what our enrollment was in FY '12. And the reason for that is, our weighted average daily attendance of 17,882 was the highest in that three-year window. We're down about $1.7 million from where we were a year ago. In just state aid, based on enrollment for next year, you'll see a reduction of about 6.1 million, because for FY '15, we will use last year's enrollment, because it was the best. And then, the projection, if our enrollment doesn't turn, if we, if it continues downward and doesn't show any kind of an increase, then in FY '16, we'll be using the current year's enrollment, and when you see a decline of about 1,500 students, it's going to have another significant impact on what happens in fiscal year 2016. So as we talk about our budget, and we talk about a balanced budget for next year, we're also forecasting and looking to the future, to plan for the future, to make sure that we'll continue to offer the board a balanced budget. The final slide is just a quick summary of what those expenditure priorities are. We know that increase student achievement so that we regain our full accreditation. We've identified our one-to-one initiative. Mr. Verge has identified that as being one of his priorities as well, and certainly one the district has taken on, our middle schools, early childhood education. We do believe it is important to attract and retain a quality and competent workforce, and so, a salary increase and a good benefit package for employees is a, is a high priority. We're going to talk a little bit about facility improvements, additional high school options. We talked a little bit about that earlier this evening, about opportunities for kids in our high school, whether it's co-curricular, extracurricular, or part of our elective program. And then, unfortunately, we have just normal operational increases like all of us have in our homes and those kinds of expenses. So this was just a quick glance, an introduction to where we were or where we are as it relates to the, to the operating budget and approval for next year. We'll continue to provide information to the board and provide opportunities for the board to weigh in on the priorities and the, and the district's direction related to our expenses. Next...
Hold on, before we move into energy performance contracting, you know, we make a quick space if we have a round of inquiry. Board Member Ray?
From pages of the Star today, the governor called for the full funding of the funding formula. What impact will that have on the district?
What impact would it have on the district if we actually were fully funded by the state rather than the, was it 92% funding that we get?
Right, we're at 93%. We would probably, if it were this year, we'd probably increase by about $5 million. And so, again, I mean, I think that would help us offset the loss of our enrollment with that increase. And that is a priority of the governor, that the foundation formula is fully funded by the time that he leaves office. The revenues are up this year for the state in the current year. They're up about $700 million, and so, there will be a play for those, those revenues that are coming in the current year.
Hen?
Just a quick point of clarification. When I look at this bar graph, I see a lot more revenue than I see expenditures. Do we, does this get recirculated back into the budget somewhere, or do we have a rainy day fund? If so, what do we use it for?
Both, what you say. One of the things that we do, if you recall, we're funding our current capital projects and capital improvements from either surplus or the amount of money that we allocate for the building fund in our operating budget. So it's used back, that's how we're funding our buildings without a debt service.
Energy performance contracting.
I'd like to ask Mr. Meyer to take us quickly through a presentation. This is something we've been talking about for months, and we're getting closer and closer, and as Darrell concludes, we'll talk very briefly about how we can finance this project as well. Darrell?
Okay, good evening, Mr. West, Mr. Tunis, members of the board, and the audience. I'm delighted to be here tonight. Two weeks ago, I gave you a brief overview of the energy performance contracting and talked a little bit about the methodology. Tonight, I'm going to give you a little bit, a few more details of our project. Just, just a quick recap, you know, we've identified over $230 million of facility needs currently in our district. And the energy perform, performance contracting implementation, if, if we decide to go this route, would, would be spread over three fiscal years. It'd be approximately $38 to $39 million worth of projects paid for by Energy Savings. And the goal is to have the high-performing classrooms and take care of some deferred maintenance. It would also trans, transform skill sets and best practices of facilities, and also help us to go from reactive to preventive maintenance. to go from reactive to preventive maintenance. This chart kind of maps the project to the KCPS mission, you know, and I say all the time, you know, in facilities, our goal is to increase student achievement by providing a safe, clean, comfortable, up-to-date learning environment for our students. And all the things on the left-hand side of the page are things that are, that go to high-performing classrooms from the facility side. Energy efficiency, thermal comfort, ventilation, and so on, as you can see that in the report. Then along the top, you see, you see the benefits, the safety, the avoiding illnesses, environmental stewardship, productivity, teacher retention. So those are all important parts of a high-performing classroom. This graph, it's a little bit hard to read, but it maps, it gives you a graphical picture of where we are. If you look at the blue, the blue tabs, those are currently what we're paying in utilities. And you can see, you know, that they're much higher than the red. The red is what we would end up with if we do this project. We would, we would actually reduce utility rates from somewhere around an average of $1.40 a square foot to somewhere around $1.7. And typically, in these projects, we grossly underestimate the savings, and so we should vastly exceed that. We currently spend about 6.1 or 6.2 in annual expenditures, not counting our closed facilities. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about some components of the project, and one of them is, you know, we've identified a lot of critical equipment across the district that is literally in a figure of speech hanging on by a thread. They're old outdated equipment, and we've identified those things, and we need the fund to take care of them. It includes basically things like primary boilers, rooftops, chillers, pumping systems, water heaters, all the things that go into the components of the building. Just a few photos. This is a picture in an AC prep elementary school. The left-hand side is an old domestic water heater. The right-hand side is an old boiler. Can you believe we have an old boiler like that in our building? It's older than the building. Now, the next picture is some rooftop units that you can tell, the rooftop units live a lifespan of about 20 to 25 years, maybe longer if you take care of them properly. But this is a picture of some rooftops that are currently at Melcher and Paxton. Another major component of this project is recommissioning HVAC systems, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning is HVAC. And the reason I'm pointing this out, because you can't, typically, we can't replace all our equipment. We would spend $130 million if we replaced everything. So part of what this project would do is go in with a team of people, engineers and technicians and our own people, and we would go through the equipment in the building and make it work. And, you know, that sounds simple, but it's like taking your car in for a tune-up. Go through the building, make it work, and then identify the things that are broken and fix it. Until you, until you do the recommissioning, you don't really know where you're at. Another positive thing about recommissioning our buildings is we'll be adding all this equipment into our, into our work order system, our preventive maintenance system. So we'll be setting up a PM system at the same time where we can take care of the equipment for years to come. Another component, very simply to save money, is supply-side management. Really what that is, is you go through your utility bills, find out in some cases where they're incorrect, you may be paying taxes. You can combine accounts to transport gas, meter consolidation, it's all things that happen in these projects that literally we're wasting money on. I've talked a lot about lighting upgrades. This project would upgrade all the lighting fixtures in the district. We have a lot of T-12 bulbs that are actually being phased out. Just replacing a T-12 where the TA can be an up to 40% savings and better lighting. Also, T-12s are known to be kind of orangey, yellow in color, and they can actually affect the learning environment of our students. They can antagonize health issues. So it's, I think, I've done lighting retrofits before, and they always make a dramatic effect. We would do water conservation measures. We would actually be able to replace most of the toilets and water closets in the district from three-and-a-half gallon tanks to 1.6. That doesn't sound very exciting, but it saves a lot of water. We would retrofit urinals with lo-fus valves, and we would retrofit faucets in our restrooms. Another thing that would be in this project is we would upgrade our building controls. That's the, we call it DDC. It's the things that turn building controls off and on and control the temperature. But you can see by some of the graphics, the technology has really grown in the past years. This used to be kind of a luxury, well now it's a standard practice. Like if you see in that graph over on the right-hand side, you'll see a red. That indicates that you've got a problem in that room. So if we had this in our buildings, we could, we could quickly be notified if there's a problem before, almost before it happens. It's all done through, through the internet and web control. District-wide energy management. We would have to, we would have to manage the project through energy management. We would measure and verify the savings. We would install smart meters in our buildings that would actually talk to us and provide data. And then one of my goals is to install dashboards where we could communicate progress to the community, to the students, teachers, to faculty, get reports. And I think it would show good stewardship to our, to our public, to our students. We also would have plans to hire an energy manager that would definitely be paid for by the savings that that position would generate. They would help track the savings. They would help implement the strategies, develop school programs, work with the teachers, educate staff and teachers. And also, part of this would be to develop a district recycling sustainability program. We would establish standards of comfort because we can, now that we can control our buildings, you know, currently, many of our buildings run a 24/7 schedule because we can't control them, and the temperatures vary wildly. Typical temperatures would be 70 degrees heating and 80 degrees cooling, and then with setbacks at night. We would have, some areas would vary from that, like gymnasiums and cafeterias. We would vary those set points. And then we would allow some minor adjustment by the occupant in offices. This is, I'm getting close to the end of the presentation here, so I'm showing you a financial summary that has a lot of numbers, and I would be happy to answer questions about this now or later in more detail. But you can see where our current expenditures in this column, where they show the electricity, gas, supply-side water, all the factors on what our current expenses are, what we're projecting they would be after the project, the average annual savings, and then the savings over 15 years, because we're, we're doing this, these savings would last 15 years and longer. And then our annual payment, as you can see, is 3.4 million. I know I'm going through this very quickly, and it's, there's a lot of detail to this. Just to summarize the project, this would play a key role in leveraging our resources because this project does not directly come out of capital, it comes out of operating expense, funds that we've saved by not, by not wasting, replacing T-12 light bulbs and utilities and all that. It would, it would provide a dramatic improvement to our educational environment here at the district. It launches us into a program of environmental sustainability. And like I said, it's paid from, from savings over a 15-year period. And it's also, a good part of it is guaranteed by the, by the energy services company that would perform this. So that concludes my presentation. I could answer some questions before we talk about the financing.
Jackson?
How much of this can be done over the summer so that we can look at the reductions that would help in next year's budget, since we look at having to balance the budget next year?
Well, that's one reason why I'm eager to start. And if we, if we get this project rolling, typically, what, what we would surely do is we would go after the lighting and the water savings first. Those are the, those are the, what you call the low-hanging fruit. We could do that over the summer. And then we would schedule, we would schedule what we could over this summer. Some of it would actually have to finish the following summer, depending on school schedules. Now, the contractors would also be working second shift most of the time, like on lighting, for example. They'd be working four to midnight, kind of like we did at East and Northeast.
Like the house construction crew, so it wouldn't really affect education and learning at all, and we would just be doing the updates while the students are not there.
Right.
What is the timeline to complete the full project so we will see the total savings?
Two years from start, from the day we start to completely finished. And I would say that, you know, 70% of that we'll try to front-load so we can start recouping savings right away.
How much does, that still does not begin to touch the deferred maintenance that we still have that's outstanding on our buildings? Where do we still stand with that?
Well, this, this project would alleviate about $39 million of that deferred maintenance. If you'll see in the capital plan that Al's going to show that we're hitting another good chunk of it in the lease purchase plan, and then, then we have a longer-range plan.
Mr. Jackson, I think we'll be able to, we'll show you that in just a second on how we finance it and where the money would come from for that deferred maintenance. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't come from this.
Any other board members have something that they want? Hand?
Just a quick question. Are the improvements going on at the middle schools and Hale Cook Elementary a part of this program?
Do you have any middle school improvements on the energy?
Middle schools, middle schools are not. We, but we're using the same, the standards that we've developed, we're using in the middle schools. Hale Cook, we may, we may end up adding building controls to that, but we're self-performing a lot of that work because we needed to get started on it.
So this is like a separate thing that doesn't, we couldn't roll in previous improvements we've made over the years?
Well, technically, we could go as far back as 60 days would be, depending on where and how we obtain the financing, the IRS, those are IRS rules and regulations. We're allowed to go back 60 days from the time that the board would actually approve a resolution authorizing the sale of bonds. So we couldn't go back two years, no.
Ah, Heil.
All right, a couple of questions here. Just wanted to clarify, the total cost here is $38 million. Is that accurate?
The total project cost is approximately 38 to 39. And it's, it's a bit of a moving target, depending on, we're allowed to do as much project as we can save, as we can save money. So as projects move around, that slightly changes.
And, and, and Mr. Heil, all of the items will be bid competitively bid as well. And so when we factor in competitive bidding, hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to get better pricing, we're able to pick local vendors, we're able to get our MBW participation up, we're able to do a number of things, and perhaps even do more than what we think we can if we get those competitive bids.
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, that we are, we are borrowing $38 million and paying 4% interest roughly on that over 15 years?
That's correct.
Is there any ability that we could, that we could save money? Does it make sense at all to look at using some of the rainy day fund or the reserve for some of this to borrow from ourselves as opposed to paying interest?
It's possible. I mean, yeah, we sure can. And it will be something that we'll take a look at when we talk about how we finance it. We're only estimating right now what the, what the, what the cost would be, the cost of issuance, the cost of borrow would be. What we'll do is we'll get competitive bids when we're ready to go to market, and then make a determination, are we better to try to finance that on our own, or is it better to use somebody else's money? How does that affect our cash flow? When's our return and all of that as well?
And to be clear, I'm not advocating just using the rainy day fund and doing it, I'm borrowing it, not, not using it. Last thing I just wanted to go, to get into here, so, you know, we're basically looking at a large cash ally to start, and then projecting that we're going to get the money back in savings. Is there any guarantee of savings in this program, or are we just casting a hope or prayer?
Right, there is a guarantee. Part of performance, again, state of Missouri sets the state legislature, the legislation that allows for performance contracting, and it must include a guarantee by the contractor.
Evans?
I'm thinking about IMSIP V, college and career readiness. As we know, that every child will not be going to college. Have we thought about, and I'm sure you've already done this, thought about asking some of these companies that we're paying so much money to, to perhaps do some, provide some internships for our students, to get some kind of investment on our return, return to our investment?
Yep. Mr. Evans, I think one of the things that I know that both Ms. Morello and Jack Bitzenberg are doing, we're looking at, and we talked, as we talked earlier about opportunities and expanded opportunities for our students, especially our high school students. We're looking with our business, toward our business community, and I, trying to identify through a program similar to what we see in Lee Summit and Summit Tech. And there are partnerships that relate, and internships, between business, the business community, the education community. So we'll be able to have a high school student that potentially would have an internship for a job, generate income while they're attending high school, the community college, or a four-year institution. Cerner is an example, is a, is a, is a business that develops internships, and they pay the tuition for their students. They get paid to work, they get their tuition paid for, both to the community college and then to their baccalaureate. And so, yes, those are the kinds of things that both, I think Ms. Morello and Jack Bitzenberg have been looking at and talking to different businesses and finding out who can be our partner in this.
I'm talking about the companies that we, like, this kind of investment, are we talking about this company, or are we just going out into the community looking for companies that can provide this kind of opportunity for our students? I'm saying that those companies that we're spending a lot of money with, like Jade Dunn, are we asking them to give us, give our students some kind of opportunities?
The answer is absolutely we are. And are we doing it as much as we need to be? Probably not. We need to be much more aggressive. And, and again, I think there has to be a program, and we want to illustrate the benefits and the advantages, both, not only to our students, but also to the company as well. Because we believe that we can bring a quality workforce to that business and, and do that through, through our students. And again, I think the ideal place to do that is through manual and the activities and the programs, and we're looking to expand those.
To what extent is there, this is a question that came in through the queue, to what extent is there any grant funding or utility rebates, things of that nature, available on the front end, you know, to help with the question that Heil raises about financing this on the front end?
We've looked, we looked at several options with, with our energy services company. That's something that they'll be looking at thoroughly. Like KCPNL, for example, has, has some excellent rebates that we'll take advantage of, and we'll be looking at, you know, the state of Missouri. It's possible we can get loans through low-cost energy loans, through energy grants, things like that. We'll be looking at all those.
Hand?
I understand that this is focused on energy conservation, but is there anything out there that we're looking for or looking at for alternative energy generation as part of this sort of new sustainable portfolio we're kind of moving into?
We've, we've, we talked about, during the investment grade audit, we looked at that. For the most part of this project, we've taken anything that would fit into the 15-year window. We have, we have so many needs in this district. Solar power, for example, is a great thing to do, but it's still a longer payback. So we didn't, we haven't actively, we didn't actively choose anything geothermal, solar, wind, things like that.
All right, last question.
To back up on Mr. Hand, we have the solar panels on top of Paseo, and I know we were scheduled to put the other solar panels on top of Paseo Middle, which never went through. Is, or can a part of this project be solar panels on some of the other schools, which may also further reduce some of our energy usage? I know Jade Dunn, when they built their building across the street, they put solar panels on top of that unit, which basically all but powers all of, I think it's about 60% of the energy usage for that building. Is there some way which we can maybe do that, which maybe even bring our utility costs down even a lot more?
Well, one, one thing I would, I would, private companies have a, have a huge advantage when it comes to putting in solar panels, because they can receive the, the tax credits and, and some of the rebate. You know, we, we receive the rebates, we don't get the tax credits. What some schools have done, and I've actually investigated into it, is, is to have a company bid, do a bid, have a company provide you solar panels on a lease. That way, they get the tax credits, we get... That way, they get the tax credits, we get a certain amount of savings. So, that's something we'll be certainly looking at.
Isn't that kind of have our Pucel as part, I know we get some, we get some funding from what KC P&amp;L does off of that, but I know that's, it's structured in that same way. We don't own the panels, they own the panels, but, and they get, they get the energy that's generated from it, and we get a portion of the savings.
Right.
Essentially, doing that same manner, and they picked Pucel because that was that, that Hill's the highest site in Kansas City. So, if we can maybe look at maybe a few more sites like that, it may be of the help. But also, going back in that same manner, those are solar jobs that out there that can be created also.
I really want to keep the conversation moving. We, we've heard about this before, we're going to hear more about it. And so, I want to move into capital improvements, something we've also heard about before, and there will be additional opportunities to hear about it. And so, I don't want to spend forever on it, but do want to give administration opportunity to talk through some of our capital improvement needs that are coming up. Tootus?
Yes, thank you. And I'll go through this rather quickly, and again, remind the board that we aren't asking the board for any action, we're just trying to provide more information. And again, this is one of those topics that you hear, and the more you hear it, the more you understand it. And sometimes, it just takes a while for, to hear it over and over and over again. So, we'll try to do that again today and provide more opportunities in the future as well. The first slide addresses, there are four columns next to the project side. And those four columns would show the existing funds that we have available for capital. Then you see the energy performance contract, which is what we just heard from Darrell. Then you have, the third column would be a lease purchase, and then the fourth column would be a levy increase. You have the information in front of you. I'm going to ask Tom to take me to, move up two more slides to the totals. And here, you'll see the breakdown of those four columns. You'll see that there's $5 million in existing funds to take care of some of our most immediate needs. The Hale Cook project, things like that, will come out of that $5 million. That money is there, it's been set aside, it's been allocated, we talked to the board about where it's going to go. The second column, you'll see the $39 million that Darrell was just talking about, where it goes. It falls into that second contract, and that $39 million, under a traditional performance contract approach, would be paid back from the energy savings. And so, as Darrell indicated, there was almost $3.5 million in savings that would be realized every year. That 3.5 million, instead of going into utilities, would go to making, would be a payment to make those improvements that total that $39 million. The third column is the lease purchase. The lease purchase, once again, is using our building corporation to borrow money and allow the district to take care of some of the things Mr. Jackson was talking about earlier, those deferred maintenance items, and all, some of the other items that are listed there as it relates to capital. The district currently is spending, or has available, because of some older bonds that will be paid off, about $4 million a year that could be used to pay down additional or new debt. That $4 million could pay down an additional $52.6 million that we could borrow through our building corporation, pay it down from the available $4 million in our building fund that comes from our operating budget, and allow us to make some of the improvements that are so badly needed for the district. The final column shows an additional $146 million that would require a vote of the people and would require a bond issue, and would then create a debt service levy that we've talked about in the past. You'll see a $200 million bond issue, but that $200 million bond issue would also then be used to pay back the lease purchase amount that we were talking about in the $52 million. So, if you look at this particular graph, you'll see that there are $244 million in capital funds that are needed. Of those 250, 244 million, that $5 million shows that we have it. There's a shortfall of $239 million. If you'll see the funding source, those four columns are listed there. We obviously have a problem with the screen. The $5 million comes from the existing funds, the $39 million on the energy performance contract, $53 million on the lease purchase, and then a $200 million bond issue. Now, what we would do, as you look at the next slide, you'll see we have those four options. Option one is a pay-as-you-go. We have money set aside, we make the improvements based upon that pay-as-you-go. There was a question that came in from the cube, and they said, how, based on some of our older debt, the QSCB bonds, those are bonds that the board authorized back in 2009 and 2010. It's about $35 million total in debt. That $35 million is the only debt that the district currently has incurred. That would equate to about 1.3% of our debt ratio, and the state law allows us to be in debt up to 15%. So, currently, under number one, that's where we are right now, 1.3% toward our debt ratio. And we have $5 million set aside, and we would continue to spend that $4 million for capital. When you talk about $200 million in needs, that $4 million annually doesn't get you very far. Option two is what Darrell was referring to in our performance contract, $3.5 million annually in utility and equipment savings would be used to pay down that $39 million. If we took the $39 million plus the $35 million in option one, which is the total from our QSCBs, that would turn our debt ratio into 2.7% of that $15 million. Option number three would be the additional $52 million to our lease purchase by using our building corporation. We would use the $4 million that we currently have annually in our operating budget for capital purposes, it's in our building fund, we would use that to pay down the debt of that $52 million. And so, if we were to take option three with our existing debt, the ratio would go to 3.2%. If we included option one, option two, and option three, that would take that debt ratio to 4.7%. Option four, that's listed there, shows, and again, would require a vote of the people. And it would require, and that would then generate and create that debt service levy. If in that scenario, we were to do that $200 million bond issue, it would require that the district would increase the debt service levy from zero to 55 cents. And that would be based upon an annual payment of $15.5 million at a 4.5% interest rate. We would have $200 million, we would take approximately $50 million to pay off that lease purchase that we borrowed. It would then move our ratio to 7.4% or 10.1 if we were to keep our current debt and our performance contract for energy. So, in all four scenarios, you see that we still are, in the worst case, 5% below the state statute of a 15% debt ratio. What's also interesting about this, in the next slide, we'll see how we would do that and the impact that that has on the local taxpayer. In the, in the event, the average home is $80,000, which is what we've been told by our realtor. The assessment ratio is 19%. The 55 cent increase in the debt service divided by 12 for the monthly amount, it would cost the average homeowner in our district $6.97 per month to vote yes for that 55 cents. Now, the next slide shows what impact that has as a comparison to other school districts in our area. You'll see that even with the 55 cents, our total levy of now $5.50, it's currently $4.95, would still be the lowest in the metropolitan area. And I think that that's rather significant, that even including our debt service with our operating fund, you can see that the next closest is Park Hill at 553, going all the way up to Center at $6.83. That, again, is a very quick rundown, the timeline. And again, I think was, we alluded to something, we could go as early as the spring of 2014 for the lease purchase, the spring for the performance contract for energy. But again, there are some things that have to occur before I think we would want to go to the voters and ask for a debt service levy. And the earliest we anticipate would be somewhere the spring of 2014. With that, I will open up, I know there's, again, a lot of information, and I think as Mr. West has indicated, we'll have opportunities to talk about it again. The district and the administration won't do anything until we have board approval to do something, and so, we'll be back to the board before we would do anything as we move forward.
What questions do you have, board? Are there people with questions? All right, Montero.
Thank you. Mine's very simple. Al, was the indentment, was that increased to 15%? Or is there something coming down the line in the future that it's going to even increase more than 15%?
It's currently at 15%. There was legislation introduced last year that would take it to 25.
Hand?
If we did start moving forward with this, as, as it looks like on the timeline of the last slide, 2014, possibly into 2015, how does that sync up with our facilities master plan? My concern being, do we know, if we're looking at all schools currently, are we willing to wait until December to make decisions about other issues on the facility master plan before we spend money that we might not end up using?
Well, I think that moving forward, we know that we've got a lot of deferred maintenance that's necessary. We know that, that we have priority buildings and priority topic and priority areas. And I think that we would not be in a position, nor would we recommend an expenditure of any capital improvement that would have, that would have any kind of a potential to where it wouldn't be sustained because of the master facility plan. So, we would want to know that the resource is available, but we would want to do it in a way that is done in conjunction with recommendations from the master facilities plan.
Of the four plans that you talked about, which one is most practical? The reason I'm asking is because when I look at number four, I don't, and forgive my naivete, I don't put a lot of faith in taking something to the people. I had a presentation last night by Mr. Jackson that mentioned, I don't know how many taxes he talked about, but it was kind of mind-boggling to realize how many we've paid. And I know that there is a survey out there, there was a survey out there that was, that gave us kind of a thumbs up on the possibility of being able to pass a bond levy. Historically, 1969 up until now, again, I don't put a lot of faith in the people accepting more of a tax burden on them. Do we, do you think that we could actually put something out there that they would be in favor of?
Well, first part of your question, I think, in terms of what I think is most palatable, or I'm not sure the adjective you've described, but we're already doing number one. Number two would be the performance contract, which would pay for itself from the savings. And then, number three would be the lease purchase. I would say, as to where we are right now, that's as far as we go is to one, two, and three. The idea is that when we're ready for number four to go to the people, then we pay off number three with the proceeds from number four. So, I'm, I would recommend we get to a point where we look toward one, two, and three. We can talk about the timing and when it's appropriate, and how it coincides with the master facility plan when we talk about going to market and when we would do all of that. As far as do I think that we would have the opportunity, I do. I believe that we do. And I believe that a well-informed community is a supportive one. And I think that there are some things that have to happen in our community, and I think accreditation is critical. We talked about that earlier. And I think when that happens, it's going to happen soon, and when it happens, it's going to give us an opportunity to do some things in this district that we haven't been able to do for a long time. I think that the, our ability to attract, to attain a strong workforce, it's going to change the, the way we feel about the district, our schools, and I think we're going to want to capitalize on that momentum. I think it has, the timing on that needs to be right. And I think the thing that's going to be foremost in our minds is making sure that we have that accreditation to take to our voters. And I believe that is going to assist us in that element of credibility.